Do that over.
Let's try that again.
Good evening, welcome to the November eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen Montomoy Regional School Committee meeting. We'll call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. And we have a very special opening tribute for tonight's meeting.
Okay. Yeah.
Just kidding.
One candle in the night, shining so true and bright. Still a pure and brilliant sight. One candle lights the way. This joyous time of year, season of love and cheer. See the flame burns strong and clear. One candle lights the way. One heart, one dream, one world, one theme. One flame, one light, one peace throughout the night. One dawn of peace and love, sun shining from above. Sore on wings just like a dove. One candle lights the way. One candle in the night, shining so true and bright. All our hearts filled with delight. For all the worlds at peace tonight. Still a pure and brilliant sight. One candle lights the way.
Thank you.
Let's go be singing. When, um, Wendy Knight.
Yes, Wendy Knight.
Good job. And Wendy Knight is coming.
Whenever the loving stars are set, whenever the winds are high. All night long through the dark and wet, a man who's riding a horse by the side. Late in the night when the fires are out, why does he gallop and gallop about? Whenever the winds are high. Whenever the trees are high, the trees are high. The ships are tossed, the ships are tossed, the ships are tossed. Why on the highway low and loud? Why the gallop, the gallop, the gallop? Why the gallop, he goes and then, why he goes back at the gallop again? Whenever the winds are high. Oh, late in the night when the fires are out, late in the night, why does he gallop about? Oh, why does he gallop, gallop, gallop about? Whenever the wind, it's a lullaby, it's a lullaby. Whenever the winds are high. All night long through the dark and wet, a man who's riding a horse by the side. Late in the night when the fires are out, why does he gallop and gallop about? Whenever the winds are high. Winds are high. Wendy Knight.
That was the Montomoy Middle School. It was fantastic. I thought we were gonna have an audience tonight. You don't have an empty room. Okay, who was our agenda? Next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes from October twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen. We had not thirty curriculum minutes. Let's do this one.
Comments?
I will do further than this on October twenty-eighth.
Second. Discussion?
Discussion, okay. Um, yeah, the workup thing. The, uh, number four Dollar Tree Scholars. The committee had requested that the Dollar Tree Scholars Committee present a plan that a parent would accompany the students on their fundraising endeavor. I don't think that was true.
Which part?
That. That we would present a plan that a parent would accompany the students? We just wanted a plan that was a safety plan. We didn't specify that.
I think we said a parent would be the driver, right?
I thought that was what was suggested.
And that the, um, there wouldn't be a student driver.
It would be a parent.
I guess it kind of depends on your definition of, uh, company. I mean, if there's difference between driving and being at the house as well.
Right.
Right. But either way, the parent would be accompanying them, or an adult anyway. Maybe not, maybe not limited to a parent. But isn't that on the agenda for tonight? Haven't we?
Scott's gonna be giving a update in his.
They came back and, uh, provided a plan that I think satisfied everything I've heard at the table.
Okay, if you guys remembered it differently, that's fine.
We can speak.
Sorry. If you remembered it differently, that's fine. Second point.
Yep.
Uh, number three. It said the school committee's request that to investigate the school district's obligation for transporting our preschool population. I didn't realize we had requested legal counsel on that, because did we discuss that and request legal counsel on that?
Which line you talked about?
Number three, preschool bugs.
I never heard of that. Did you request this, Dean?
Yes, I requested that.
Well, you requested that.
Yes, I did.
But the committee didn't request it. I didn't remember discussing it and taking a vote or, you know, asking for the request.
Well, we had that initial discussion. Me, requested that Scott go to the legal counsel and get what are obligations and what contractually we have to do, which is the letter that was handed out in the last meeting.
I didn't realize that had been a school committee request, that's all.
It'd probably be clearer if it just said the chair requested it.
Please speak up.
Oh, thank you. It would probably be clearer if it just said the chair requested it.
Could you please make that adjustment, that it was the chair that made the request? The other adjustments?
Did you already, had that dollars for scholars?
Yeah, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended. So motion.
We voted, I guess, but no second motion.
So I'm taking a vote.
Yeah.
So, and it's to approve them as amended. So it's a yes. All over favor?
Aye.
opposed? Staying? Approve. Next on the agenda is public comment. Anybody from the public push to comment? Well, here it's saying none. We'll go on to run a quick, oh, quick comment.
You're not public.
No, I'm not, but I want to make a public comment. Just for those of you who enjoyed the Montomoy Middle School Musical Indulub, we will have our annual holiday concert on December ninth for our chorus group, six thirty P M. at the auditorium at the middle school. And our band will perform on December nineteenth, that's a Thursday, also six thirty P M. at the auditorium. We'd ask the support committee to come on out for the chorus and band performances and cordially invite the school committee to attend as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you send us an email saying that?
I'll include you in the connect, that message that goes out to the entire Montomoy community. Invite that to those things. Thank you. Recognitions.
Recognizations, I have a few. I'll try to go relatively quick. First, in your packets, I want to recognize and acknowledge that the Massachusetts Association of Science Teachers has named our own Annie Haven, our middle school science teacher, as the Lawrence County Science Educator of the Year. So I stopped down to see Annie today and give her some congratulations. So got a great science team there at the, at the middle school. Two years ago, we had another one of the Science Educators of the Year as well, so. I also, in your packet, just wanted to acknowledge some of the special things that, you know, that happened. And, you know, there are a lot of special things that happen in this district. But, uh, but one that, you know, that took place a few weeks back. Cindy McComber had a weekend foray with, uh, ten, I believe it was ten, middle school students for the two thousand and fifteen archaeological dig at Taylorberry Farm. And it was, it was a great opportunity. They have a nice Facebook page, so I think I've included one, you know, one shot from that page. But, you know, in my own education, I was a fifth grade teacher who took me on an enrichment opportunity like that that really made all the difference in my, you know, sort of future thoughts about science. I also want to thank, it's in your packet as well, the Orleans Eastham Order of the Elks, who are providing dictionaries for every third grade child in the district. Also, on the table, you have the program from Peter Pan. If you didn't get an opportunity to see the performance, but I'd really like to congratulate Deb Donovan and Dave Bruski, who directed the performance. It was a fantastic, yeah, fantastic show. I personally got a kick, you know, sitting, you know, sitting near a number of younger students as they were watching, you know, Peter and Wendy and others fly around, around the stage. Yes, it was, it was very magical on many levels. And then just some, you know, some other sort of things that were magical in the last, in the last couple of days to, for me, although I may need to start dieting quickly because of this. It's just, just a couple of hours ago, here we had our second annual Thanksgiving dinner for the senior citizens of our community. So we had Angie Chalaca, Caroline Freitas, Peter Moynah, and Jill Eastman were some of the Montomoy staff that, that made the Thanksgiving dinner possible. We had a cafeteria filled with senior citizens from Harwich and Chatham. Our peer leaders were serving them, greeting them in the parking lot, at the door, and serving them their meals. And afterwards, sitting down and breaking bread with them and having conversation. And I had a great conversation with a number of seniors from both our communities. And then yesterday was the annual Chatham Bars and Thanksgiving dinner that, that was held for Chatham Elementary School, which is magical in its own way. So as I was walking through, I had a table of third graders, you know, wanting me to come sit with them. So these are my, my table mates. But I really appreciate the, the Chatham Bars and staff for continuing this tradition. And it's, I mean, it's, it's nice to see the kids get dressed up in, in their finest. And, and then we have Chris Roberts, who's our music teacher over at the elementary school. Went and had a number of new songs that, that the children were performing this year. But then there were some of their, the standards that they had sung in past years as well. So I think we have a little clip. I don't know if we'll be able to hear it, but we'll see. That's okay. We'll get there. But, um, but it was, it was, it was nice. They, a couple of the teachers went and recorded, you know, recorded the kids singing and, you know, shot it out. So I had gotten it from a number of different parents. And it was, it was also nice to see we have, you know, we have some teachers that came over from Harwich Elementary this year on staff. For them, you know, it was, it was their first, you know, first experience and they really appreciated the, the event. So, you know, thank you so much to Chatham Bars and for, you know, for Chris for a wonderful job with the music.
I'd like to ask, it seems that Chatham Bars and then it's been going on for like twenty years. It seems like it was like a father of kids or something, that was a cook there. There was some connection.
I think it was Chris Diego.
Chris Diego started.
It was the general manager.
There would be addition to the elementary school and there was no potlatch.
Yeah, it was so wonderful. It's been going on for so long. I wondered if we couldn't see if we have a connection at Wake Forest or something. Because now that we're Montomoy, it seems like maybe somebody in Harwich would step up for the Harwich kids to do that. Even like in Chatham, it's the whole elementary school. Even if for Harwich, if it was one grade level. So, because what's so wonderful is that for Chatham, I think maybe Chatham Bars and is the place that people always talk about having to go. And a lot of kids, Chatham people might not ever get to go. But the Chatham kids get to go every year. It's, it's very, very special. I'm so glad we have them.
Next on our agenda is student representative report. It's lady, we didn't forget you this time.
Hello. Oh, how's my phone? How are you?
Good.
Great. Um, so I just have a few updates. What's going on lately? So, um, as Mr. Carpenter said, we had a great Thanksgiving dinner today for the senior citizens. And tomorrow, we're actually doing it again, but we're having a Thanksgiving lunch at the Wayside Inn. The Interactive Club is going to go have lunch with senior citizens that maybe don't have family around or anything like that. And it's sponsored by the Rotary Club, so we're excited to go do that tomorrow. Um, we also, yesterday, we had a volleyball tournament in support of pancreatic cancer. We had about twelve teams, I think, and even a staff team. We battled it out. Um, also, um, Mr. Carpenter mentioned we had a very successful Peter Pan and it was announced that our winter musical is going to be the Addams Family this year. Also, I think last time I mentioned that Stan was going on a trip to D C. We came back last Monday and we had a great time. We actually got to lobby for the Atrocities Prevention Board with a few of our senators staffers. And the Atrocities Prevention Board is just to help prevent genocide and mass atrocities from occurring in other countries. Also, we had our Sanscript Writing Club go to the elementary school to read stories to the kids in the elementary school. Tomorrow night is the athletic awards for fall sports and the signup for winter sports at the high school. Um, and finally, sticking with athletics, we had a senior, Jen Keim, sign her national letter of intent to play at Florida Atlantic Division One Golf next year, which is really, really exciting for us here. And we had a lot of fun, the whole, um, we had the like, I didn't even know we had this. We had this big white sign that said Montomoy. She had all of the, uh, the, her flags and she put her hat on and everything, so it was great. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, lady. Thank you.
Move on to reports and discussions. First on the agenda is MCAS and PARK results.
So this, I apologize for the length, we're trying to be thorough and we'll, we'll mix it up a little bit. So I want to give you sort of the latest news on this and then share, you know, share the MCAS data through the department coordinators that we have here with us from the high school. And then look back around and share the PARK, the PARK data. So, um, so yesterday, the Board of Education voted to transition from MCAS to a, to a new PARK-like system. So the commissioner's been referring to it as MCAS two point O. So the state for the last, you know, for the last couple of years has been piloting PARK and has decided not to go fully down the PARK route, but to take lessons learned from the PARK experience and adopt that in the development of a new MCAS. So the new MCAS would begin in the spring of two thousand and seventeen. It would mean that, that school districts that are currently using PARK would use PARK in this year. So there's not enough time to go completely shut gears and create the new MCAS two point O for the spring of this year. So, you know, so Montomoy would continue along the PARK route for this year. And then the following year, you'd have this new MCAS starting to come to be. The state is also heading towards having it be fully a computer-based test for two thousand and nineteen. Now, Montomoy went and fully went with a computer-based PARK test for grades, a third grade beyond, you know, which has been a learning curve for us. And I think in many ways, it will benefit us down the road, although it provides a very challenging initial foray into, into computerized testing, particularly when it involves elementary age children. The state also has indicated that it's holding districts harmless in terms of their accountability rating while they're in this transitional period. So schools that have been using the PARK are not, are not accountable of their grades or if their, if their grades are decreased relative to the MCAS because of the PARK testing. So in your packets, there's sort of the news release that, that the state put out on that. So it was, it was clear that, you know, that the direction that the country's going and the state's going is to come up with a more rigorous test. And last year, Montomoy, like many districts, decided to take part in the PARK pilot. So we administered the PARK pilot to grades three through nine and grade eleven. The MCAS was still administered as Montomoy as it was statewide, but it was only used, or it was administered as the graduation determination. So, so while we were administering PARK as a district, our tenth grader still took MCAS because that's, that's still the standard that the state is using for the graduation determination. And the MCAS was given as a pencil paper exam, while PARK was given as a computerized exam. You'll see on this slide that, that the split ones on districts going with PARK versus MCAS, that it was forty-six percent of the districts continued along the MCAS route. They'll continue along the MCAS route this year. Fifty-four percent of the districts went the, went the PARK route last year. So if we just step in and look at our MCAS results, we'll have Rachel Barnes, who's our English Department head, to provide the English Language Arts MCAS results for grade ten last year. And some of her analysis and her department's analysis of that, followed by Mary Hemian for math and Dustin Doris for science.
Good evening, members of the school committee. I'm Rachel Barnes, the English Department Chair. And happy to share our positive MCAS results from the English Language Arts with you today. As you can see from the first slide, our results are really, very good in every area we started out from the state. If we take a look, our students who performed in advanced category, fifty-six percent of our students were able to achieve that level, whereas the state level was forty-nine percent. And then looking at proficient, our school had forty-one percent of the students achieving that. The state had forty-two, but so many weren't in the advanced category that it makes up a little bit of the difference. It's a bit of a wish. We still had two percent of our students in needs improvement and one in warning. And we take that seriously as well. So what we did next is we have, I'm gonna show you the item analysis. If we take a look, the pink is the state subgroup. That's how average students in the state of Massachusetts performed. The other colored boxes demonstrate where our students fell as far as their performance on each of these questions. There were only three questions in which our students did not perform as well as the state average. The remainder of the test, the students achieved at or above. But in looking at that, we kind of decided it wasn't good enough to say, well, we, you know, we can rest on our laurels now. We decided that we were going to go through a process to take a look at that information. We partnered with World Language Department, thanks to Bob Seltzer, who's the World Language Department Chair. And all the people we got together, we thought it would be important to take a look at where our students who were not successful actually weren't successful and what were the specifics that were kind of holding them back from the process. So we looked at all the trends for incorrect answers to see where might students need to boost and where might they need some assistance. And we also set some priorities for addressing the concerns that we had. We figured we would look at the ones that were sort of the major areas to see if we could find some trends. Our big takeaway within the English Department was that while they're out performing, we could definitely continue to work on improvement. Close reading, which I know is a district initiative for us this year, seems to be the biggest area where students were not successful. That's where they were falling down. Making sure to read all data carefully, instructions from beginning to end, making sure they could actually pull out the specifics that were required in order to answer the questions successfully. There's still trends that some of our weaker students can be working on. So that's something that we're trying to, as a department, figure out, how are we going to do forward with that? So we actually did that in our PLCs today and we'll be continuing that work the next time we meet. Vocabulary reinforcement was the other major area that we saw. A lot of our kids get vocabulary exposure, but if they're not using it on a regular basis and a repeated basis so that they own the words themselves, they're not gonna walk away with them. Words like chronology, we use with them, but if we're not having them use them, how are they gonna remember them when they get to the test? So that's another area. them when they get to the test? So that's another area of concern that we're focusing our efforts on. Um, and finally, general test-taking strategies. And in looking at that, we're also looking towards what kind of strategies for the PARC two, uh, PARC test will be transferable to NCAS 2.0 so that our kids are really ready when that test arrives on the scene. Can I ask any questions for anyone?
A lot of data to download.
Yeah, yeah. But you should have a good look at it later over tea.
Yes.
Um, and up next is Dustin Burns for the Science Department or, or Mary Hemian for the Math Department. Okay. Somebody's coming up to speak next.
Actually, do we need Rachel on the top?
I do.
Oh, then don't worry. Jen, you have mine, right?
Tag your it.
Good evening. Dustin Burns, um, science teacher here at the high school and also the department chair. Um, similar to what, what you just saw, we, uh, in the Science Department are using the, uh, the available NCAS data, uh, to kind of analyze our performance and quantify our success and then also find ways to improve our curriculum and, uh, teaching methods. And these are just some quick summaries of the data, um, from the last two years in biology. These are the scores for biology. The first two bullets are just overall passing scores. And, uh, in this department, we do very well. Really proud of our performance with the, uh, biology NCAS. We're, uh, a few percentage points ahead of the state average in both years. And then the graph shows the categories of advanced and proficient. And, uh, we're also doing very well in those categories. Go back a slide.
Nope.
Okay. So these are the, uh, the eighth grade, uh, science NCAS results. I think this is going to be a major focus for us. We definitely have room for improvement here. Um, the, the uh, the state scores also are much lower than the biology state NCAS scores. And we're, uh, close to those scores overall in, uh, eighty-three percent passing in 2015 versus the state eighty-two percent in the year prior. Uh, somewhat similar result, but certainly with this test in particular, there's a lot of opportunity to keep going up. Uh, with the biology NCAS, we're almost near the top already, but we'll still keep going until we get closer to a hundred percent. But this is a test where we can focus on in our PLC meetings and really identify some deficiencies in the way we, uh, we teach this, uh, these This is the, uh, biology NCAS data, um, sorry, item analysis. And, uh, we also look at this to look at individual questions. And the, the biology NCAS is in five major categories: genetics, cell biology, evolution, human anatomy, and ecology. And then we can look at each question, uh, item by item in which category and try to identify, you know, items where we didn't perform as well as we think we should have. Um, and that's super helpful for us to be able, uh, to do that. And it's something we look at quite a bit. Um, most of our items well above state average or right with the state average, but every now and then you find a question where you're just really not sure why they didn't do well on it. So you really take a look at that question and see, um, if there's a way to improve that for the, the next year. And then finally, uh, same type of graph for the eighth grade science NCAS. And again, we're looking for anomalies in these, uh, in the performance for these questions. That's, uh, helps us focus on, um, the way we're going to present the material in these classes. So any questions for science?
Well, I have to wonder what question thirteen was in the, uh, biology.
Yeah, that's, uh, that is a good question. And certainly when our PLC meetings, we will be looking at that. And, uh, you know, sometimes it's, it's, uh, just the question itself might have been, uh, worded in a way that wasn't accessible for our students or maybe there's something that we, we didn't cover well enough. And we're really, um, uh, we're certainly very analytical when it comes to things like this to figure out how we can improve.
What's interesting is that it's not just the school, it's the district and these ones that take a dip. I'm reading it correctly.
Right, yeah, it's, um...
It was the same in the last graph.
Just go back to that one. Yeah, the, um, the school in the district, those numbers will be the same more or less because...
No, I was thinking, I, I was thinking, um, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. So we don't really need that, both of those.
Yeah, but in this, in this case, it's the same. Any questions?
Simple, quick observation.
Sure.
You look at the dips that go down on the graph, you see numbers twenty-four, twenty-six, and twenty-seven are all somewhat below the state subgroup. It's likely that's a unit of questions around us in the standard set of topics or certain topic. So it's a good reflection for us to look at those three questions and say, what was the topic? Can we do some better alignment?
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You going to be my Vanna?
Please. I'm happy to.
Oh, there we go.
Um, last month, the math department dedicated their PLC to looking at the NCAS data. And what we did, you see the famous graph here by now, but what we did was we looked at each question and took a, took a peek at the topics that were prevalent as we fell below the state average, um, as you can see by the indicated blue and green, uh, graph. The item analysis here progresses not in numerical order as seen on the test, but rather by the question that was scored lowest, um, on the state average and then progressed to the highest percentage correct. If you go to the next slide, just in case you are all disappointed that I didn't come with my, my problem of the month, um, this is a sampling. After we looked at those questions where, you know, the, the trend was quite low, um, we went to the particular question on the NCAS exam. And this is a sampling, uh, of what we found and decided that quadratic functions was an area where the students did not score like they should have. Uh, we determined after discussing it for some time that it wasn't that they never mastered the standard. It's an Algebra I standard. But we decided that it was probable that too much time went by between the time they had mastered it in grade nine and the time they took the grade ten NCAS. Um, so that was one of the topics that we identified as a weakness there. Uh, radicals, there's an example in number three. What we had discovered there was we think that the students are too accustomed maybe to calculator use and didn't have a good feel for estimating the radical without a calculator. Um, so that was another area of weakness that we identified there. Linear equations, uh, for example, number eight that's up on the board, same as the quadratic. That's a standard that students see now in grade eight, starting in grade seven. Um, they see it again in grade nine for Algebra I. And again, we attribute that to maybe just not enough practice in grade ten prior to, um, looking at the exam. Exponential functions, we identified to be a curricular issue and, um, basically need to infiltrate more of those exponential functions into the Algebra I and geometry curriculum. So that's a sampling. Uh, we, we did take a look, if you are looking at the broken line graph, we did take a look at every single question where we fell below state average. These were the prevalent areas of weakness. Um, but what we, what we decided last month as we established goals for our PLC for the year was that we would dedicate a significant amount of time to putting together, um, a supplemental NCAS curriculum that we are going to submerge into the Algebra I and geometry courses so that regardless of, um, when the students master that standard, say like linear equations, that they will get that constant, um, repetition and exposure prior to the exam in grade ten. So, uh, that's one of our goals that we outlined, that we will be working on this year in our PLCs. Next slide, please. Uh, the other area for room for improvement was just open response in general. And we basically had, um, that, that's nothing new. You know, we, we fight that all the time in math. Uh, this is actually question forty-one on the exam. And what we found when we looked at, we, we looked at individual student scores. And on their open response, it wasn't like they were getting three out of four. A lot of these kids were getting zero, taking our average way below what the state's average was. And that tells us that these kids aren't trying. They're not trying to answer those kinds of questions. Um, so the open response in general, uh, one of our other initiatives that we want to do as a department, um, and a district-wide, the district determine measures that you've heard Dr. Blanchard talk about, practicing those problem-solving skills. Um, part of the common core are the mathematical practices. And the first one is persevere in solving problems. Um, so we're constantly exposing the kids to a variety of problem-solving techniques and skills, much of, you know, some of which I've shared with you, uh, in the past. But this is another example of, you know, the, the kids, it's the end of the exam, they're looking at this, and they're completely shutting down. Um, so we're strategizing to come up with ways to encourage them to at least get something on paper. Um, yeah, one or two out of those four points. We had, like I said, a lot of zeros on some of the open, uh, response questions. Uh, and then this was part of, this presentation was part of what I had presented at last month's faculty meeting. Um, and as we move forward, things that I've talked about, we will continue, as we always do, to look at the data, um, identify those areas of weakness like I mentioned. Uh, what we haven't done is looked at what we've done well. So that's something that we will do as well during our, our PLC time. Uh, and then as we move forward to fine-tune the Algebra I, geometry, and Algebra II curriculum, uh, make the necessary adjustments, like I mentioned, the NCAS supplemental materials that we want to get embedded in those, those two courses specifically, uh, make adjustments like that so that we can improve those scores. And I think there's one last slide maybe. Uh, one thing that, that Bill and Scott had asked was, even if you're not a subject teacher of one of the state tests, you know, how, how can you help? How can the history teachers, uh, foreign language teachers, Rachel already mentioned, you know, getting together with world language, what can they do to help improve the NCAS scores even though they may not be a subject test? Um, and so these were some things that I shared with the staff. Just stress the importance of D exam, um, stress the importance of trying the open response questions. Um, and then one of the main things was practice having your students explain or justify their answers. Because another thing that we found when we looked at, again, this is individual student scores and a particular question, was if they were getting one or two out of those four points, probably they did the math correctly, but then fell short on justifying. Um, so we were asking the staff, even if you're not one of the subjects that's being state-tested, those are some ways that you can pitch them. I think that was the last slide.
Mary, are there, um, are there ways that the other, the other departments can, I mean, I think what you're talking about there is it gets to be closer to, closer to the testing time to have the other teachers remind them how important certain things are. Are there any other subjects in which similar skills, um, are used?
Well, I know, you know, we've, we've talked with the English Department, obviously, that does a ton of writing, the history department, um, as well. We've also in the past talked to history. Um, and honestly, these discussions have just now started at our table here. Like I said, this was a presentation to last month's faculty meeting, but, um, a, a lot of what I personally am doing right now in Algebra I were analyzing graphs. And I know in history, a lot of times when the kids are building timelines, um, one of the discussions, one of the discussions that can take place is when you set up a graph, whether it be for math or for history, uh, or for science, talk about, you know, measuring that independent variable along your horizontal axis like you would time. You would put your years along. So things like that. Um, certainly, science, it's got its own area of testing, but a lot of connections between math and science, um, you know, dimensional analysis is all over the place in both subjects. Um, and the radical, the, the radical expressions that the kids are apparently struggling with, and it's not that the math is that difficult. I think that they're so accustomed to using technology that they're just not forced to do it by hand anymore. And clearly, the state is still asking for them to do that. So that would be an area where, uh, you know, subjects like science could ask them to do their calculations without a calculator, um, for that kind of practice.
Thank you.
Mary?
Yeah.
Um, sort of dovetailing on that, uh, the things that you just said are very helpful to see, uh, cross-curriculum, how some might make up for that. But I'm wondering, with high school, seems as though, um, and maybe science is this way too, maybe more than language arts, that you have a discrete thing you're doing with a certain grade. And then that goes over here and you start another whole thing. But what I am hearing you say is something over here wasn't practiced very much, uh, during this year. So that sounds like it could be a problem.
It's tough. Math, you know, math is tough that way. Um, and, and if you look at any of your traditional pathways in any of your schools, um, that's the way you're going to find math being taught is, um, very traditionally where the students are, um, you know, given their Algebra I standards, generally in grade nine, geometry standards in grade ten, um, and so on. The state did come out with an integrated pathway, um, just recently. It has, it, it's, it's not very popular among schools. It's very different. Um, and PARC has, or, or the department that has now, um, made the decision not to do the integrated PARC test. So even though they had come up with, the state had come up with that integrated pathway, um, they really are focusing on a more traditional approach. So that's tough. And, and that's one of the hardest things for students is retention of something, something that they learned in grade eight or grade nine. Um, and they may have mastered it then, but like anything, if you're not continually practicing, you lose those skills. Um, so that's, that's one of the greatest hurdles in general mathematically and especially for the struggling math student. That's one of the reasons that we had decided as a department that when we looked at some of these, you know, we're shaking our head. We're saying, how did they get these linear equations wrong? Uh, it's not possible. But we attributed it to the fact that, you know, a year plus a summer plus another, you know, half year had gone by. Not that they never saw it, but the rope drilling skill wasn't... Not that they never saw it, but the rope drilling skill wasn't there as much as I guess it should have been. Because that's what they need. So that's what we've started to do is, is look at those particular areas of weakness and get a bank of literally old MCAS questions and just start feeding them almost on a weekly basis to those ninth and 10th graders so that it's not a gap that's destroying their, their MCAS test. They need some repetition.
Thanks, Steve. Mary and the troops, thanks very much. A lot, great deal of clarity here. And over the years, it's a challenge. A couple of thoughts I have, and this is late to school because you folks are here every day and breaking it down question by question. So it's a lot of, I appreciate your patience saying, here goes a layman saying something. But these tests are in eighth grade. Really, it seems to be our weak card in Howard and Easton, maybe Chatham too, is math. And over the past many years, we've seen the struggle to at least get ourselves at state average, which isn't really in many ways saying too much. Because all those kids have that same year and a half gap. They all go home this summer. They all take vacations. They all get tired. So that is, that equals the field. And I wonder if, as you dig down, I'm sure it's part of it, that maybe math, there's a culture here, not in the eighth grade or the ninth, but in the first grade, in the second grade. So that for the next several years, we, you know, Warren and I thought, that's a good one. Years ago, we looked at kids acquiring more grit. The ability in first grade, second grade, saying persevere, never quit. Put down something so it's a one rather than a four, whatever that is. And I'm sure you're already doing that. But that's, that's something that, as I think Scott has alluded to, reverse designing the math program starting in the first grade, which takes five, six years before we reflect this. That's, that's an old fashioned thought. My other thought, it reminds me of the Patriots in Spigot. I wonder if there's, as we move in the next year or two in, that we get a collective group, cross-section of math teachers in Chapman Howard, Shemontoy, reflecting certain grades and creating a team that would visit a high flyer with the same demographics that Shemontoy reflects. And have a visit for the day or two and just chat with them to say, let us pick your brains. What have you done to cause the vast majority of your kids? And I'm not talking about the western, west of Boston. To achieve that nudge above the state average. And come home with, hey, we're doing the same thing. Good, let's keep going. So anyways, I think of this and I see it, I see these suggestions, say, cause our kids to feel culturally more comfortable not quitting on the test. And maybe that begins in pre-K, kindergarten, first grade. For not all the kids, because they grow at different times in their lives. But it might be a thought, we just have to be patient with how this gets improved.
No, you're absolutely right. I mean, one of the, like I said, the mathematical practices that the Common Core delivered, number one, was just that. It is to persevere in problem solving. This generation of children that we are working with, you know, without putting a blanket statement across all of them, they're so tech savvy and they're so into instant gratification that to get them to sit and persevere for any length of time is very difficult. One of my colleagues and I are doing a team goal this year focused around that problem solving perseverance. And I give them the problem and to work quietly in class. And it's like, last week, I caught one of the kids on his phone. Couldn't look at the problem for more than two minutes, but he had to Google it to find the answer. It's tough. And then you couple that with, like you said, math. I'm thinking about my AP Calculus class that I have. I have a class of juniors. And, you know, they're the brightest of the junior class and are struggling because for the very first time really, this college level calculus class requires them to remember every bit of math that they have been taught from the get-go. And that's something that's unique to math and I would dare say for language. It's such a building block that you need all of those previous tools to move forward, which makes it a little unique compared to, you know, not disrespecting the other subjects, but, you know, a biology MCAS or an English MCAS. It's not as content wide. Yeah. So it becomes very difficult. And if you're not practicing all of those skills regularly, then the trap becomes you don't want to teach to the test. There's so much more out there. It becomes a delicate balance of doing your job well so that you are, you're preparing them for, you know, the next class that they're going to take at the high school level or moving on to the college level. And yet in the back of your mind, you've got that, you know, state testing looming over your shoulder where that's in the mix as well. You know, you've got SATs thrown in there, which is another, another spectrum. So there is a lot going on. And I would say that yes, starting at the early grades for that perseverance is a huge, a huge piece of it. So that they, that they don't quit or they don't feel, they're not made to feel inadequate if they can't get it right away. You know, none of that should, should be happening.
You know, I'll find a point I have, in high hopes. The inclusion of this, the future plans for this PLC block of time, I think it's a terrific thing for math teachers, the whole crew to be able to, every other week to get together and talk business and to be able to have the confidence and the trust that we're struggling with good stuff. We're not doing as well at A or whatever I mean, but we found some time to not just scratch our heads alone after school, but with a group of three or seven of us. So that, I think that points in the right direction.
I do too. I was just telling Bill at our department chair meeting that, you know, the math department in general was really very grateful for that time that it's been relinquished to us as a department to, you know, we laid out our agenda from now until June. And, you know, everything from common assessments to, you know, future departmental DDMs to the MCAS supplemental packet, all of that, that we would quite frankly not have time to do otherwise. So.
Okay. Following up on the comments that were made about having to incorporate, you know, the whole concept more in the lower grades, you know, the perseverance things. I can, I assume, or my understanding is, historically, part of the problem that the math department has is, is the difficulty you have sometimes with parents. You know, you always hear.
Those Windegrins. I said, those Windegrins.
My kids did okay, thanks, Steve.
They did great.
No, but I'm thinking about, you know, I'm thinking about all the things we hear over the years. You know, you have the parents who say to the teacher, well, you know, I was never very good at math, so I can't really help them with math. Or, you know, I'm a woman and I've never been good with math. I mean, there's this longstanding sort of attitudes in the home, I think, sometimes that are not helpful.
I'm a woman and I'm good with math. Really good with math.
I don't know, any idea what the solution is, but the discussion.
That's a commonwealth-wide, that's national.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean. So, but the, yeah.
It shouldn't impact our scores. In other words, those conversations might be going on.
Regardless of whether it's societal or, you know, it would certainly help if there was a way to involve parents more at the lower grades with, you know, with the understanding the importance of math or the value of learning math. And I don't know how in a million years you'd get there. But I imagine that's a thing that's more difficult for math than a lot of other subjects.
I would say you're correct. Were you going to say something? No, I don't really need to go to the mic.
It's sort of a requirement of ours.
Come, come join. So I'm going to come stand right next to you.
There you go.
So, so I think one of the things that we can look at seriously about, from the younger levels, aside from perseverance and helping parents help their students, is looking for some more meaningful interventions for students who begin struggling with math when they are young. And I think in the larger districts, and I think it's a great idea to go out and look at the districts in our neighborhood who are really doing well. And I think in larger districts, there are more interventions in place to help students. And what I think we do, or, and we're probably starting to tweak it, is traditionally we've pulled kids out to give them interventions. But when you pull kids out, you take them off course. And so if they're two degrees off course, well, two degrees in one year is just a little bit. But you keep going two degrees off course and all of a sudden the gap is really large. So there's got to be a better way to do our interventions for our strugglers. That's, thank you.
Yeah, we were actually just talking about that at our PLC today, trying to really fine tune the offerings for the high school kids and servicing them well. And what do we do with those struggling learners? And, you know, last year we had submitted a course called Foundations in Mathematics that we had wanted to run in conjunction with our ninth grade math. But unfortunately, the staffing, you know, just wasn't there. And so those courses are not, are not being run. And like Kelly said, you know, when you've got a class of 24 kids sitting in front of you, you're doing all you can do to get those concepts taught. But that individual time that those struggling learners need is not going to happen in your classroom. And pulling out, like Kelly mentioned, is going to defeat that purpose. Our goal would be to offer those kinds of interventions in addition to, you know, their math class. And, and I think that, you know, I had a conversation with Bill last year about program of studies and about this foundations class. And he said, well, what if we can't get it to run in grade nine? How about grade eight? And I said, honestly, the earlier, the better. Put it at the elementary school if you can. Anything like that. And develop their love for math. Students aren't going to love a subject that they struggle with. That's just, I'm not a history person.
That's a great thing about Level I. It really, it gives those kids that have that need a little. Steve, just as a follow-up, I think it's a very good idea. These are just general conversations, none of which you haven't kicked around before, I'm sure. Interventions, I'd be, speaking as one member, and I know we've taken a look at middle school math. I'd be interested in, it comes into a budget issue, but that's probably one of the most important reasons why we sit here. So if, as you go into PLC and other activities in the next couple of months, if much like we take our kids to the doctor and he says, allow me to write out a prescription for you because your temp is this or that. I'd be, I'd be interested to see a list of proactive interventions that could be submitted to our superintendent and Dr. Blanchard and take a look at it for this year or next year, which has probably already been done. And then take a look at our budget and say, do we have? You know, the first thought is no budget. But are your advanced AP kids, there are half a dozen of them through community effort that could go down and, and I'm sure maybe this is already being done. And become an, and intervene with those kids. How you do that and what they miss because they're with somebody else. But I, none of us, we've struggled three years with this in my old location and came up shop. It was kind of fun to try. So that means, especially where math needs a prescription so that we can get ourselves in the next three years to where we're happy with these kids doing well beyond persevering. So whatever interventions, and I'm sure that's one of your tasks and always as goals. So I'd appreciate that to be able to look at that in the next couple of months.
I love that you're looking at all different levels. Because when, when I would see kids working at the elementary school, they would love math until the first time they didn't know what question to ask. They got to a point, and most of us in math at some point, got to that point where the teacher's going ahead and you're lost and you don't know even how to ask the question. That, I've never seen that happen in another subject, maybe with the English language learner. But that's when intervention needs to happen, before days of that accumulate.
That's right. It's because it is very cumulative. And then the kids will shut down and it just is a big snowball.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
We'll transition back. Just, there are two things I forgot to mention earlier. One's, one on recognitions. Bob Smeltzer has generously provided us with the official Shemontoy wristband with the Latin Shemontoy logo to the light, if I have my Latin correct. So, so thank you there. And since Rich is back there, you may have heard Rich jumping for Julie. You know, part of the commissioner's mission on where we're going is to bring back a social studies MCAS. So, so Rich's wish has come true. So just to kind of close out, close out an MCAS discussion and shift to Park. Behind me are where we stand on MCAS relative to peers on the table. And, you know, we've talked before, you know, math is where we're behind many of our peers. And it's, it's an area where we want to see CS moving. You know, my, my opinion of Shemontoy, given the quality, the high quality faculty we have here, our families that are, you know, that are committed to our education and our talents that support us generously. There's no reason why we should be significantly above the state average in each of these categories. So, so this gives us directions on where to go. And I thought, you know, the detail that, you know, that we're hearing from the different departments and how they're using that PLC time to look at the specific questions and to identify where they can move forward, I think is a sort of a good example of the conversations that are happening now related to Park. As we, as we shift to Park, one of the things that I'd like to just emphasize to you is that MCAS in Park, because it's the Massachusetts piece, the data flowed to the school district sooner than the data for Park. So the Park analysis is beginning and in process, but it's not at the rich level where the, you know, where the high school has been able to look at the 10th grade MCAS data. So, so you're going to hear an analysis of the scores and if Mark and Sam, or her presentation of the scores, and if Mark and Sam want to chime in on what's happening, the steps that are happening there. But also as we get into the end of Park, I just want to give the committee a feel for what parents will expect to see in their hands soon. So, you know, if you had a child that took an MCAS exam, they've gotten an MCAS report that, that families have been used to. But there's going to be a new thing that parents are going to be getting, which is a report on how your child did on, on Park that's going to be coming, coming soon. So, so differences between MCAS and Park. The MCAS has, has for years, we have the things that we've been used to. Advanced proficient needs improvement in this morning failure level. Park has a five category breakdown. They have exceeds expectations, meets expectations, approaches expectations, partially met expectations and did not meet, or did not yet meet expectations. So, you know, two different, you know, two different scales. So when you're, when you're trying to compare the two, you know, you're, you're looking at, you're looking at this. And the state's done a nice job at, at trying to look at how those two systems have melded together. You know, one of the things that we see out there in the media is that students that took the Park struggled on it a little bit more than they had on the MCAS. So you're seeing, you're seeing the number of students that are in those, the categories where we want to see them, the, you know, the meets or exceeds standards or advanced and proficient, you know, that we're seeing, you know, a slightly lower percentage on the Park achieving, achieving those levels. So where we, you know, So where we, you know, where we landed, and I, I think it's sufficient to say, if we do sort of a broad stroke over the next series of slides here, in general, you know, we see the Montomoy data many times below state average. And again, you know, I, you know, I expect and I know we have the capacity to have it above state averages. Some of the things to, you know, to keep in mind here as we're going through this, there's, there's not anything out there that talks, that talks about or actually gives data on how students that are taking an exam on a computer did versus pencil and paper. And some of what I'm showing you is, you know, this is how the Montomoy students did, and we're comparing it to a number that's a hybrid of students that are taking it on a computer and students that are taking it on, on, you know, with a more traditional pencil paper method that the students are more familiar with. And I, I think it would be a good sort of generalization, particularly at the elementary level, and hearing from Carla on conversations she's had with, with the teachers, when they've started to look at their students and how their students fared on the Park, there, there are many students that the teachers would look at and say, that, you know, this child should have done significantly better. You know, maybe it's the computer, just the computer format, or even the computer that they were on. I think in some, in some cases, students were taking it on Chromebook, and that was the first time they were ever seeing a Chromebook versus some of the students taking it in the computer lab at a computer that they'd at least go to once a week as part of their regular courses through the universal logs. So, you know, so it's, so some of it, I think, is, you know, we might attribute to newness. But again, I, I don't want to use that as an excuse. It's just trying to explain, you know, explain, you know, some of the challenges that students face. So, so we have the third grade, the third grade results. Grade four. Fifth grade, it's now just the middle school, so we don't have the two elementary schools in, in fifth grade. The sixth grade results. Grade seven. And grade eight. In grade eight, the math scores bifurcate. So students in grade eight would either take the grade eight exam, or they would take an Algebra I exam. So you see, you see two different math scores, math scores up there. And, and another factor to at least point out when it comes to the Park data is once we get to the high school, so grade eight for us, well, most schools in the state don't have eighth graders at the high school, grade eight for us is at the high school. And you'll notice that the participation rates decrease when we look at the eighth grade data. And that is partly attributed, attributed to what we could call some civil disobedience that the students and families were having with regard to the Park exam at the high school level. And it wasn't just here, happened a lot, a lot statewide, where, you know, there was the, the expectation that you take the Park, but also, you know, this, this contradictory message coming down that, you know, if you don't take it, well, there's not anything we can do either. You know, it's, it was, it was not a high stakes thing. So, so some families at the high school, particularly in grades nine and 11, just said, you know, we prefer not to take the exam. So, you know, so the ninth grade data we have and the 11th grade data isn't a representative sample of the Montomoy students. We're close to a representative sample when we look at the eighth grade data, but we're starting to see the attrition in the, the group that's, you know, the groups that's taking it. Then you have to kind of ask, you know, do you have a heterogeneous group that's opting out, or do you have a homogeneous group that's opting out, and how's that impacting the data? The other thing that I think you start to see when you look at the eighth grade data is those students that took it, my, my take is some of them just blew it off. I, I, I know one of the, I know one of the people that was, was the proctor in a room for the exam said, you know, one student finished it in about 38 seconds. And, you know, so, so I, you know, one of the things that I did that's in your packet, I, I, you know, I did an analysis of, of how we, you know, how we fared on the, you know, how we fared on the exam versus our Capepeers. But I also, I also on this, for my, you know, for my own edification, went and said, okay, how would we fare if we excluded the eighth grade data? And if we exclude the eighth grade data, we do better. But still, we're not where we should be. You know, we're not seeing Montomoy significantly above the state average, but, but clearly that eighth grade data, and I would say this is partly, you know, how the students took the test and how seriously they took the test, really depresses the, that average score that you're seeing for the, for the grades, for the grades three through eight. And this is what, you know, what gets, you know, gets put out there as the, as the bottom line, you know, here's how Montomoy fared on the, you know, fared on the Park. So in terms of the, the Park, the Park exam, families will be getting, the Park results will be coming out and sent to families, states late, late November, early December. There would be separate pages that they would see for ELA data and math data. The results show, will show how the child performs on those tests relative to the state, relative to the, you know, their peers in the district, but also relative to the, the Park participants. And then there's, they have a specific, they'll give a specific score or a rating for how they do relative to competencies in reading, writing, and math. So the, the report card, I, this is sort of like a, a taller document, I just kind of did the top half of the document, bottom half of the document, would look, would look like this. You'll, you'll see what level your child is at. You know, so in this example up here, you know, the child is, is at level, is at level three, so they're, you know, so they're not quite at that, you know, not quite meeting the expectations there. You'll see that there's, you know, that their score is slightly below the school, the school average in this, in this example, you know, below the state, the district average, and the state average, and the Park. They're tied for the Park average on this particular, this particular example. For the, you know, for the competencies when it comes to ELA, there, there are competencies in literary text, informational text, and vocabulary. And you'll see when it comes to reading, now, what's your child, and they give it sort of a, a thumbs up, an arrow up, arrow sideways, you know, so arrow up means they meet or exceed, arrow sideways means they nearly meet, they're in that middle, level three, or are they, you know, level two and one, below expectations, you know, arrow down. So, you know, so the parents will get a graphical representation of arrow up, arrow sideways, arrow down for the different competencies. And then they'll have competencies in writing expression and knowledge and use of language conventions for writing. When it comes to math, same, you know, the same sort of, sort of score. And the, in this case, this student is finishing level five, so they're exceeding expectations on the exam. Their, their score here is above school, district, state, and the Park average. And then in the example, the, they have their exceeding or meeting expectations for math in major content, expressing, mathematical reasoning, modeling application. And then the arrow sideways here, they're nearly meeting expectations in additional or supporting content, and we're able to still be level five with that in the example of the state five. So, you know, so I have, I've also included in your packet just what that full Park report should, you know, should look like for our families. So the next steps that are happening, the, just as the ELA science and math groups here at the high school have been looking at the MCAS data, our teachers in the middle and elementary schools, and in the case of Rachel's eighth, eighth grade group here at the high school, looking at the Park data to look at where individuals need support, but also what we can learn from the data, where, where are students doing well? You know, where are students on average having room for improvement? What types, you know, what types of problems to go and focus in? What sort of areas do we need to work on and improve in?
That'll be it. In a nutshell.
Steve, just a question for Scott, probably, or maybe it's just dropped me way back to the first slide on Montomoy grade three Park results. The Chatham Elementary, the Howard Elementary, anticipation rate for this particular test in Chad was 81 percent, Howard 99, and it was such a wide margin, it caused me to...
Well, what, I, I can't quite, I'll admit, I don't understand the 81, because if you go to the, to the math data, there are, there are 37 students tested at Chatham Elementary and for the math data, and it says that, that 37 students was a 91 percent participation rate. It just, these are the data that the state's providing. I, I don't quite understand how, if you have 36 students, it's 81 percent, but 37 students is 91 percent?
Very large student. And, and we had 41.
So, so this, this is me, and, and Tony did a great job, poor Tony had to look, re-look at all the numbers after I plugged them in. This, this is the state's number. So I'm just, it's just the facts, can't quite explain that one. I, I, I've gone back and pulled up, opened Edwin Analytics to look at the raw number again and again. It's, it's still, that's, it is what it is.
I, just for the pilot Park, it's amazing that this report card is so thorough and so graphic and so detailed for the study of not only the pros, but I worry, I worry about the moms and dads who get this in the mail, to be able to make sense of all of this. You know, it's fairly late tonight evening for us to read it the first time, but hopefully they'll have the moments at home to read it thoroughly and come up with a understanding of how Johnny's doing.
Right. It, it seems reasonable to conclude that our experiment with the Park test was not very successful, to say the least, particularly in the math area. So if I understand it, you know, the state is going to go to a new system in 2017, and we're going to stick with Park for 2016?
I'd say yes. I, I, well, I'd say that we finish below the state average. You know, I, I think what we're doing is we're ahead of the curve of, in 2019, we're doing what every school in Massachusetts is going to need to do. You know, so, so we're ahead of the curve in terms of trying to figure out the logistics of using computer technology to administer the exam. So, so we're three years off of all schools being required to do a computer-based exam for MCAS 2.0. So it's, it's been a, a, a learning curve for us. You know, I, I think clearly, and, and we've had conversations, you know, with, you know, with, at the, at the elementary level, and even, you know, we were meeting with the academic council, includes middle school department leaders, who are talking about, you know, just the technology proficiencies we really need to start focusing on at the elementary level and at the middle school level to have our students better able to have success on the Park. And, and then down the road, if we're looking at 2019, one way or the other, you know, to have them better able to go and have success on MCAS 2.0. So I think it's been a rough learning curve, but, you know, but I think it's been a valuable learning curve.
When you say, that's right.
Karen.
When you say ahead of the curve, in what way?
Just that, that it's, it takes a lot to go and administer, administer an exam online and, and work through the technology hurdles of, of that. And I, I think that some of the lessons, you know, some of the lessons even, you know, that we were learning at the elementary level, it, it makes a big difference if students have experience with the type of computer that they're going to be taking the exam on, you know, for the test, you know, have they experienced that type of computer? You know, we, we, as a district, we brought in, you know, these, these Chromebook, you know, COWs, computers on wheels, but the students didn't get a chance to use them enough, so it was for them a little bit of a foreign technology, even though they, they had weekly experience at a desktop setup. But it's just trying to give them comfort, you know, in, in different technology, you know, settings to at least make sure they have the comfort level on the computer, make sure that they, that when they see a text box that looks like this, that they, it, it still allows them to keep typing, that, you know, that, you know, so we, we had each of the students do a practice exam, you know, they, they were able to use some practice type questions, but, you know, but there needs to be, again, more familiarity learned in that. And that's, it's just us learning and, and helping students understand the format.
I just wondered if you were referring to the rest of the state, but I see that you're not. Thank you.
Well, Steve, in one sense, the advantage would be that some communities in the Commonwealth chose not to do the Park. Therefore, we're all going to repeat ourselves in a year or two years, so those communities will have a, a catch-up experience that we've already had a chance to be vaccinated sort of a year or two ahead of.
Right. I think the split was, what, 54, 46 percent?
Was it between those who participated and those that didn't?
Mary.
So are you saying that this year they'll be taking the Park and that there's going to be two years where they go back to a written MCAS exam before the 2019 computerized test?
I don't know, I don't know yet what that exam is going to look like one year out, but I presume that the state, the state will, my presumption is the state will pull out MCAS 2.0 as a computer exam, and that probably has a written option in that, you know, in those, in those introductory years as they ramp up. I, I think, you know, part of the reason the state's saying it's going to be 2019 before everybody's required to be on computers, just what will it take some communities to ramp up to that? I mean, even, even for us, you know, we had to go out and get, you know, these COWs, the computers on wheels, to be able to go and administer a Park exam in our elementary schools and our, in our middle schools. You know, the high school, you know, was easy. We have, you know, we have Chromebooks, but, but we had to put in the resources for, as a school district, to be able to do this at the elementary and middle school.
If I remember correctly, also the, the districts that opted to do Park, it was not required to do a computerized Park.
Right.
They had paper Park tests.
Right.
So we're at the advantage of having the computer technology throughout the district, and the kids have the experience. But even just, you know, watching my kids, my sixth grader still hunt tests, and to have to write something out on a computer, imagine the third graders writing something out, having to type. I mean, they're, they're not going to be two-hand typing at that age, and the text box is confusing for them to be able to understand that it's only three lines big, but you can write this much because it'll keep going. So to give them that experience and have more familiarity with it will be helpful.
That was, that was part of a conversation at the academic council meeting with the middle school and high school staff was, you know, I, I think while we've, you know, distributed Chromebooks to all of our high school students, there are still high school students who, who, you know, I, I think it might have been Dustin was, you know, was commenting on the, you know, one of the most valuable courses back in the day was that keyboarding, you know, that keyboarding course. valuable courses back in the day was that keyboarding, you know, that keyboarding course, and that art has kind of left, and we've kind of assumed, you know, I know with my own children, I had, you know, back in my high school experience, there was, you know, there was a typing keyboarding course, and I, the other day, I was working with my daughter, you know, who I see, you know, she's got two fingers, actually, there was one finger going and a sandwich at first. And I was like, maybe we could put the sandwich down and try two hands. So, she put the sandwich down, we had two fingers going, and it's like, it's like, you know, you can go and use, and I'm trying to, you know, work on the, here's where you position your fingers. I think my son, you know, who's two years older, has figured it out and has that awareness, but, you know, clearly, if we want to support the students' elaboration, you know, some of it needs to be supporting their just general keyboarding skills, and then we have to look at the program and say, okay, well, where do we put that in?
Is that on part of the computer?
Well, I think, again, that computer technology thing, you know, that we do at the elementary school, I think we're, it's, this is helping us with an awareness of what, you know, what things do we need to put, you know, put into that, you know, because I agree with you, you know, it needs to even start before, before third grade.
So, one of the things, a slightly different subject, was when we were going to go to computers, they said two things would happen. One is it would be a lot cheaper because you wouldn't need all the help from scoring up and all, the computers would do that for us, and the other thing is that we'd get our results back a lot quicker. Did any of that happen?
Not yet. So, I think that when Massachusetts starts to own its own computerized version, my hope is that we'd see a quicker turnaround and have, you know, it would be nice if they take it in the spring, there's some general grading that happens late spring, early summer, and that you can have teachers come together in the summertime for professional development and come in with an understanding, rather than us, you know, getting, you know, getting the results at Thanksgiving and looking at, okay, how do we help students that we've already had for a third of a year?
Long-term goal on that is to have the results back to districts by June first, so they can have that information in hand to make prudent, decisive decisions, scheduling decisions, all that stuff.
But how does that happen? Do we, like, lobby our legislators, or who makes, who do we impress?
It won't happen until it's a web-based assessment in two thousand and nineteen, and then it'll just be a question of how quickly they can turn the assessment data around from submitting it electronically to get reports back to districts, but the long-term goal is June first. I'd be happy if we get it, you know, by July first, as they first roll it out.
Well, let's face it, if they take it online, you know, with the exception of the open response questions, the moment they log off, you should be able to have a report on how they did.
Does the state report how long students took to take the test, since we took it on computers?
I don't have that information.
Because that is, I'm sure, tractable, and it would be interesting to see if there's a correlation between length spent on the test and score.
I can't even get information on whether there's a correlation between taking it on a computer versus paper, it's about someone just saying it's about the same.
Any further questions? Okay. Next hour reports and discussions is the financial review.
So, this is an interesting time of year, where we've submitted our E and D certifications to the Department of Revenue for FY fifteen, but they're busy setting tax rates for cities and towns, so the regional schools come after that. The auditors were here this past week just wrapping up the FY fifteen audit. What you have in front of you are your financials through the first quarter of FY sixteen, and we are busily scheduling and working on the FY seventeen budget. So, I continually ask myself, now, what year are we talking about? So, what I'm going to talk to you about right now is the first quarter of FY sixteen. When I sent the packets, I included the assessment for you, just as a reminder, because we talk about the assessment so much, and then I just gave it to you because that shows, that, you know, provides you the information, you know, on the basis of the assessments for the two towns, and then revenue report as well. So, where we are through September thirteenth, where we were through September thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, was we had an unencumbered, unexpended budget of five point six million dollars. About two million of that was our health insurance, and we still hadn't encumbered for the portion of the year. And we had expended twenty percent of the budget at this point, and what, after running the first quarter, what my staff and I have been doing is going through and looking at areas, making sure that we've encumbered all the funds for, you know, our insurance bills that we get from the towns, or, you know, different things like that, because we'd like to have it all encumbered as much as possible at the beginning of the year. So, I don't know if anybody has any specific questions. We, in backup detail, I did include a column that shows the adjustments, that with all the movement, as you recall, there was so much from when we built the budget, and then with staffing movement, those showed the budget adjustments that we made, the internal ones that are just within the same cost center the superintendent approves, and then it reflects the adjustments that I brought to ask its school committee meeting. Probably not, no, the next packet will show when we did the budget transfers between cost centers. So, there aren't any surprises, and I don't know if anybody has any specific questions.
Jerry?
Thanks, Steve. Katie, on the second page, the pencil-in E and D?
Yes.
At six hundred thousand, that's as of...
No, that's what, so, the revenue sheet that is in front of you is the general fund revenue, so that's, we pulled that out of the software, but as, when you remember, when we built the budget, we said we were going to use six hundred thousand dollars of our E and D to support the current year's budget. So, that wouldn't pull in from a general ledger report, I wanted to make sure that someone wouldn't look and say, gee, we were six hundred thousand dollars short on supporting this budget.
My follow-up, and now, it's totally separate question. Have we already reconciled the previous general budget? Do we know what that number?
Well, we've submitted our E and D, all the paperwork, to the Department of Revenue, it was due October thirty-first. To me, it looks like we're going to add roughly two hundred thousand dollars to our E and D, but I hate to really put out a number because then it becomes fact and it's not fact yet, because there's some accounts they look at and make some adjustments, but that's what it appears to me for the end of FY fifteen, that we would end up in the black, about two hundred thousand dollars.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Katie.
Thank you.
We're going to jump down to superintendents for court, so we can have the sharing of the plan for Dollars for Scholars.
So, in your packet, Tony provided me one Dollars for Scholars books, sort of the seven-part, you know, directions that students would follow when doing the door-to-door solicitation, you know, with the understanding that an adult, not students, would be, you know, would be driving for this.
So, is there a timeframe, what do you think you are doing it?
I think at this point, we're thinking about trying to do it this spring. We're talking about maybe March or April, and what it involves is coming into the school, talking with the seniors. The seniors are generally, usually, class officers have organized groups of kids, and then we would have to make sure we had adults' parents, and then we were hoping this year to use the high school. We used to use Chatham Community Center, and the students spend about three hours going out, and we give them a map, and we give them envelopes and various things that they take, and they have badges, and we have, you know, cell phones and things, but it's about a three-hour activity. But that's kind of what we're thinking, but our committee was waiting to see too what the school committee would say. We had had been a fall activity around Columbus weekend, but we're a little concerned if we wait, that it might lose its momentum. I mean, some people are used to it happening and kind of wondering when it'll happen again, that kind of thing, so, but we have to vote as a committee.
And in actual fact, it may be good in the spring because the scholarship season, application season is going to run from February first through April first, so if it happens within that time, it could be a big rush, just from that. You're pulling in money, and that's good.
So, we take a vote on, before we do, this is, this document in our folder, which obviously is a pamphlet that they're putting together for the students. I was actually hoping for a little more detail from the committee, not this committee, but that committee, with regard to exactly what the process and procedure was going to be. I thought that's what we had asked them to do, was to put together an outline of, you know, exactly how they were going to do it, and who was going to be involved, and the extent of supervision, and some sort of understanding of what time of the day it would be, or what day of the week. I mean, I thought that that's what we had asked for.
I thought we asked for this, so, I think it was confusing what we were asking for, because what we said was a safety plan, and this is...
Well, this isn't a safety plan, this is what, this is part of a safety plan, but it's not a plan in the sense of this is how they're going to do it and when, you know, so...
Do you feel uncomfortable about this? I feel very comfortable about it.
Well, I think...
Well, you know, some of us felt comf-, a lot of people felt comfortable about it before they walked in the door, because it's something that's been done for many years, and I think a lot of issues were raised. My standing was the issues were raised initially by some of the people from Howard, who had not been doing it for a lot of years, and I think we raised questions when they were here about, you know, safety issues. We, you know, it's not our fundraising activity as a school committee, we're not responsible for it, but we are, you know, well, they're asking for our support, and we are, we are letting them use our students for a project, in which presumably the students are going to be representing themselves as, as the school community, so it does, the success or failure of it does reflect on us, and the safety issues reflect on us. If something was to go wrong, or if something was, if we were to have objections from people who had their door knocked on, they're going to presumably come to us with their complaints and objections, so...
Right. But I think we need to be more specific, like, since they dropped this, and this is kind of what I imagine, when I'm hearing them say last time and this time, is that parents will provide, there'll be maps, and then they'll be, parents will be driving them to the drop-off areas. I'm not sure if we knew more specifically what we wanted to know, then I think it'd be helpful.
Okay.
But this is, this is what I expected, but also what Pat Long presented kind of went over a lot of that. I mean, she made the point that, you know, the committee's been doing this for many years, and that she herself is not unfamiliar with the concept of risk, considering the business that she runs. Risk and safety are pretty paramount in an insurance agency, you know, that was a really good point. And she also had said, as far as the money on doors, she said, there's going to be a lot of notification beforehand, so people won't be surprised by this. For me, I thought that she covered it well, and this filled in any gaps.
Anyone else?
Let me respond with Brian, there are a couple of specifics that you'd feel more comfortable with in addition to this. The day it's going to take place?
Well, actually, and some of the things that were just pointed out that were stated, I anticipated that there would be a written outline summarizing those things, so that there'd be some documentation of exactly how the plan was going to develop, other than just a verbal presentation.
He's a lawyer, remember, yeah, he's got to be in writing.
Well, you know, yeah, it does.
I'm sure that can get developed between now and this spring, and I think that, you know, Bill and his staff can go and work with the Dollars for Scholars books on that, making sure we've got that in place.
Can we just, do you guys have a checklist that when you meet with the students, or do, I know you've been doing it for years?
Well, I haven't done it for years, Pat did, and then I helped her two years ago. We didn't do it last year, but the students, it was a three-hour period of time. When we did it before, we did it on a Sunday when a Patriots game was occurring, like Columbus weekend, so that we were hoping people would be home, and it was, I think it was nine to twelve, or ten to one, something like that, you know, set time. The kids came to the community center, and we were sitting there with a table, and we would give them a map or maps. They had specific neighborhoods to go to, and then they would have an envelope to collect money. We also gave them envelopes that they could leave at a home if nobody answered the door, and they were, you know, and then they reported back to us at the end of three hours. They could come back sooner if for some reason they were finished. They, if they had any kind of issue, they were told to call us. Now, that was when they were going with a senior driving as opposed to a parent. One of the things that we were thinking is that a parent might not drive them to each door, they might, you know, stop at the base of a street or something and then pick them up, but, you know, they do have, they are identified, we've notified, in the past, we've notified the police, we put articles in the newspaper, we've had signs out so that everybody knew that these students would be coming around. It wouldn't be a surprise, or shouldn't be a surprise.
So, I guess what I'm wondering is, everything that you just said, is that written somewhere to be able to hand out, or can it be typed out so that it's...
It can be, you know, one of the things we need to do is...
For those who are unfamiliar with it?
Yeah, we need to come up with a specific date, but those other things can definitely be written down, and like I said before, we've tended to come to the school to talk with the students one day, then after the whole thing occurs, we'll go back to the school, meet with the seniors. Typically, the Dollars for Scholars website is put up on the screen because we're trying to let the seniors reinforce that we want them to use this program, and then we've told them which car earned the most money. There's typically been a prize, you know, pizza or something for the car that earned the most, but we're also trying to educate them about using Dollars for Scholars.
I mean, certainly, it hasn't all been written down, because we were sort of stopped because we didn't have the approval, and so we didn't move forward on a lot of the written-down things that we would as soon as we can get back into committee and really start the major planning for the whole thing, and we'd be happy to give that to you.
So, maybe it would be possible to give a general consensus that we... So maybe it would be possible to give a general consensus that we like the idea, go ahead and work on the specifics, and then a final approval when the specifics are...
If, if that's what you...
Written down.
If that's what the school committee needs. I think my assumption is, is that we could work with the principals on this.
Right.
Yeah.
Just my thoughts.
I like that thought.
Make, make Brian happy.
I think that, you know, since we have the kids go to all these different countries and all, that the safety issue just doesn't make any real sense to me. But the thing that you mentioned does about that somebody, I think it's likely in the first year or two, since that people are not used to it here, that there may be some commotion that's, you know, disturbed because somebody came to their house and wanted some money, but...
Especially during the football game.
Yeah. So I think that's...
Is it halftime?
I think that's to be expected, but it was such a success in Chadon, I think after a couple of years, that will be a non-issue.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not proposing that, that I have an objection to what they're wanting to do. I don't have an objection to the fundraising, and I certainly don't have an objection to raising money for scholarships. So I, following up with what Nancy said, I, I would totally vote to support them doing this. But my support for that is based on the assumption that we will eventually see something which is much more detailed as to how it's going to happen. Even the suggestion, even the mention, you said, you mentioned was that, I mean, one of the things you said was that they're told if anything goes wrong to, to make a call. I mean, that's, that's not in here, for example, which I assume is the handout that you're giving to them, so.
You're looking for process, is what you're looking for.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, and I agree. That's a, a good thing to be getting.
So maybe we could vote with the caveat that we get that information in writing, something like that, and a date.
Would somebody like to make a motion?
I think she just did.
I second it.
Any further discussion? Not me.
Well, somebody's got to make the motion.
She, she did.
Brian said she made the motion.
It was motion, then second.
Okay, you got to speak up.
Can you? Is the motion understandable?
I have that we vote to support with specifics forthcoming.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 So we'll...
Tony, secondly?
Thank you.
Two seconds.
In terms of the strategic plan, so far we have two hundred twenty-seven individuals have participated on the online survey. Most of them are parents, and Bill and Mark are having their English teachers work on having their students take the, and respond on the survey, so that we'll get student input on this as well. And then tomorrow evening, there's a email blast that we sent out, that tomorrow evening we'll have opportunity for parents and community members to, to come and share their thoughts on the strategic plan and, and school improvement. I had one community member emailed me asking if I would just let her know when the next forum, last I emailed her, and so she was like, oh, I'll be there, so looking forward to having another great conversation. We had a, it was a parent phone Monday afternoon at Chadon Elementary School that involved talking about sort of the new enhanced lockdown, Alice Protocol, but also Calmer Choice. And it was a, it was a good conversation that I think, you know, that I think had, you know, had a lot of themes that showed up, had showed up in other conversations that, that we've had with parents. And I know that I was meeting with, you know, Sam staff, or a couple of members of Sam staff on Monday afternoon to invite them to share more about school improvement and the strategic plan. And, you know, they were talking about positive behavioral strategies, that Calmer Choice is, has a lot of, a lot of features that, you know, that, that could potentially tie, you know, tie into that. Mary Hemian was talking about, you know, one of the things that she thinks would, you know, would help on the math side of this is, is learn better early intervention. And that's definitely a clear theme, you know, that I've heard in conversations with elementary teachers. And so, and so there's, there are, you know, there are themes. All of the conversations that, you know, that I, I hadn't shared with you, I've posted on the website, and when we close out the survey shortly after Thanksgiving, we'll go post those responses up there. So, so what the conversations have, have been, will, you know, will be out there, and I'll work with the administrative team to, you know, to take, you know, that information and take it back to the draft that we have, and, and enhance that draft to reflect, you know, the nature of the conversations and the themes that, that keep coming up. Let's see, we have the youth risk behavior survey scheduled where I met with peer leaders in the last week and a half here at the high school. And we have seven peer leaders that will be presenting the youth risk data. They'll be presenting on December eleventh, if I can read my handwriting, to, to the high school students and sharing with their peers what the survey's saying. And then on the evening, December fourteenth, from six-thirty to eight-thirty, we're planning on having a public forum, and those, our peer leaders will be presenting the youth risk behavior survey here in the auditorium.
How are we trying to figure out what Y R B S stood for?
That's it, Youth Risk Behavior Survey.
There's an email attached to it.
And I think the last thing I had on things I wanted to bring up and raise with the committee, I'd like to start putting together a director of student services hiring committee. And I would like to see if I can get a couple volunteers from this committee to be on that committee, okay? And typically, I don't ask school committee members to be on hiring committees because of the, it's just cleaner and easier to, to have parent volunteers, but not school committee. But this is a very different hire because this ultimately is a hire that comes to you. It would make a lot of sense for this hire that we have a couple members of the school committee on the hiring committee.
I would be interested.
I'll volunteer as well.
Subcommittee reports. Do we have any reports from subcommittees? Did you have an opportunity to read the goal stuff from, from our last...
I haven't. I've been doing funeral things.
The policies...
Keep putting that on the next agenda. So you can all have an open discussion and then move forward with that.
We don't have a specific report, but the policy subcommittee has been trying to get together to meet, and it's just been issues with everybody being able to get together. We're still trying.
Probably get easier as we get into the holidays.
Yeah, thanks.
I have a couple policies that Joan would ask that we look at and revisit, so I'd be going forward, forward those and starting conversations.
We have some action items to take care of this evening. First is the field trip to China, April two thousand and seventeen.
I move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in unanimously. The next is the approval of the revised student activities policy. Do we have a motion?
That's the activity fund policy, right?
Right.
Yes. I move to approve. Second policy.
Any discussion on this policy, which is quite extensive?
Move all that carefully.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So move unanimously.
We have the vote to establish the regional transportation revolving account. So, so as we're, as we're going through the audit process, I find in our, and when I go back into our school committee minutes, that we had a conversation about the regional transportation account. So this is, so, so we get state the, as a region for transportation. And we can go and take some of those monies and roll them over into a subsequent fiscal year. And so Katie and I did a presentation to suggest that we establish said account, and because we've had a discussion, and we, we went so far as to actually suggest moving monies into the account, so we have that in minutes. But it does not appear that we have in the minutes ever creating the account to move the monies into.
How did the scratching go?
Did you have any questions?
So I would, I would ask, I would ask that we have a formal vote to create an account to put the monies that we've voted to move in, into.
Somebody else might...
What he said?
I vote to establish a regional transportation revolving account.
I would second that.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So move. And last on our agenda, our action item, is declaration of surplus.
Could I just speak to one of them?
Yes, you may.
Okay. It's taking that off. It's actually kind of a, kind of a sad heartbreaker. The granite bench is, it was just an accident. Somebody went to move the bench and it shattered. So Tom Blue, I just spoke with him tonight, and what, we're going to declare this surplus hopefully tonight, and then turn it back over to his company. And then they're going to, he'll, we talked about carving out the emblem and repurpose that beautiful lighthouse that was shattered. And then there's a quote for nineteen hundred and twenty-five dollars that they're going to replace the bench, and we're going to pay for that out of our building use account because it's heartbreaking. It was a gift of the class of two thousand and twelve, and it, but just rest assured, it was just, somebody just went to move it and it broke. It was outside, and we're going to make sure that we find a nice place inside for it to be. So I just wanted to let you know. Right.
So at this point, it's declaring the broken one as surplus so it can be replaced.
So then we can, then, then we can deal with it what we desire.
Can't even resort, it's, I mean, it's literally shattered, yeah.
Apparently, I move to declare surplus, the black granite bench that was the Harwich High School class gift. Okay. Can we do them all at once, or?
Do them all at once.
All right, I also declare, for Monomay Middle School Storage Closet by the main office, right source two thousand sixty books, twenty-three We the People Civics in America books, thirty-nine spelling gold level books, fourteen World Cultures and Global Mosaic books, seventy-two English Gold Level books, fifty-nine mathematics books, and nine impact mathematics algebra and more books.
So a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question. I'm just curious why these are surplus. Do we not use them anymore?
I would imagine that that's the case.
No, I'm just going.
We the People of book of two thousand and three.
Still updated.
You know?
Yeah, some of the other ones might not be.
These people want to take us.
Generally, when they come to us with books that they would like to dispose of, either they are not...
Usable.
Addressed to, usable towards what we're teaching to the kind of core, and/or the condition of the book is that it belongs beyond its useful life.
Nineteen eighty-eight English book.
If there were just a little note, some more saying something along those lines, it would be simple, just to know.
And, and, you know, a lot, you know, from the math books, you know, there are things about the math books that they're no longer aligned to, you know, to where the curriculum is, or for that matter, where we want to take the middle school curriculum.
I'm not objecting, I'm just asking for more information.
Hopefully, the potential won't swing in another direction, and we'll need those books in five years.
Exactly. There's rumblings about that, you know?
I, I can't even remember the name of the math program that my son took that nobody understood. Oh, what, anybody remember what that might have been called?
Was math their way?
Math their way? Yeah, something like that.
Chicago was only elementary system.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So move. I will entertain a motion to go to a very short executive session.
Go both.
Second.
Full call.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Going into executive session and not returning to the full session.